Good evening and welcome to the December 1st, 2022 continuation of the November 14th, 2022 meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. We are glad you decided to join us this evening. Established by state law, our planning commission is composed of seven volunteer voting age residents of Menlo Park appointed to four-year terms by our city council. Our planning commission is not a policy-setting body, that is the city council. We are a policy implementing body. We review development proposals on public and private lands for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinance, which can be found in the city website. The commission reviews all development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, variance, minor subdivision, and environmental review associated with these projects. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as a recommending body to the city council. In fact, that's what we'll be doing this evening. For major subdivisions, rezonings, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and the environmental reviews and below-market rate housing agreements associated with these projects. We work in close partnership. We greatly rely on the staff of our city's planning division, which is responsible for coordinating the enforcement of the city zoning ordinance and related policies concerning applications for residential, commercial, and industrial development projects. If this is your first time joining a planning commission meeting this evening, we are very glad you are here, and we encourage your active participation at the appropriate points this evening. This is a hybrid meeting with some commissioners and staff in council chambers and some participating on Zoom. This is about the third or fourth time we've done this, so please bear with us as we continue to work through integrating those present in person and those participating online. I'll turn now to our clerk this evening, who is here in the city council chambers, Associate Planner Chris Turner, to explain how members of the public can participate during the public comment period that we will have later on this evening.
Thank you Chair DeCarty. Regarding the procedures for communicating the commissioners participating remotely, we'll have their webcams on for the duration of the meeting. Commissioners in the council chambers will use the microphone at the dais to speak. For those presenting on an item on tonight's agenda, we ask that you also turn on your microphone and webcam during the presentation of your item. A member of staff will assign you keyboard and mouse controls if you're displaying a presentation. We then kindly ask that you turn off your webcam and microphone when done with the presentation portion of your item, unless called upon by the chair. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions by clicking the raise hand icon on your screen if you are participating via Zoom, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. If you are calling into tonight's meeting, please click star nine on the keypad on your phone. And this will notify staff that you have a comment. If you are participating in person, please fill out a comment card and hand it to me, and we will make sure that you have a chance to speak. If multiple people are speaking from the same Zoom account or phone number, please let us know at the beginning of your time, and we will make sure each person gets a chance to speak. And with that said, I will hand it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. I'm gonna go ahead and take roll. I'm gonna do my best to do alphabetical order, which will ping pong between Zoom and here in the chambers. If you could unmute yourself so that we can make sure you can be heard, that would be great. I'll begin with Commissioner Barnes.
Good evening, and I am present.
Great. Commissioner Doe, here in the chambers.
Present.
Vice Chair Harris.
Here, hello everyone.
Commissioner Riggs.
Presence, good evening.
Mister Schindler, here in chambers.
I'm here.
All right, and Commissioner Tate.
Present.
Terrific. I am Chris DeCarty. I'm the chair. My pronouns are he/him, and all seven of us are here this evening. Because this is a continuation of our November 14th meeting, we will not have reports and announcements this evening. We will not have an initial open public comment period, and we do not have any consent calendar items to act on. We completed those portions of our agenda on November 14th. We also completed the first item of action, which was item F1 on the 14th. So our meeting tonight focuses on the remaining item from that November 14th agenda, which was item F2. That item, F2, had two parts. We completed the first part of item F2 on November 14th. That was regarding the SEIR. At that meeting, we had an introduction by the project team or presentation by the city's SEIR consultant. We had public comments on the draft SEIR. We had commissioner questions and comments, points of view on the draft SEIR, and then we closed that public hearing. This brings us to what we're doing tonight, which is the second part of item F2, which was a study session, and that's going to be our sole focus this evening. So as stated in our revised agenda, this item is a study session for introduction of changes to the zoning ordinance in El Camino Real downtown specific plan that might be needed to modify residential densities and associated development standards to implement the housing element update. For this item this evening, we will have three parts. First, an introduction by the project team. Second, open public comment on the proposals. And third, commissioner questions and comments. This is not an action item for us to vote on as a commission this evening. The current plan is for the planning commission to receive the final housing element for consideration in a joint meeting with the Housing Commission on January 12th of next year. So let me pause right now for any questions from commissioners about what we're doing this evening, or if I have messed anything up from staff before I would turn it to Acting Principal Planner Tom Smith to begin this item on our agenda this evening.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. That was great. Thank you. We can proceed.
Any questions from commissioners before we proceed? All right, with that, the floor is yours. Acting Principal Planner, Mr. Smith, welcome back. Thanks for your patience, and over to you to introduce us.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty, and good evening, planning commissioners. I do have a presentation that I will share with you for the study session portion of this item. So I will start with a brief project overview, just for anyone who may be tuning in, who has not been up to speed with the project overall, but I'll try to keep this brief. So a little bit of background, we are talking about our required sixth cycle housing element update, and that's a plan for the city's housing needs from the period of 2023 through 2031. And our regional housing needs allocation for that eight-year period is 2,946 units, roughly 2,950. And we're also updating the general plan safety element and preparing a new environmental justice element. So collectively with the housing element, these make up the housing element update project. The city is required to adopt the housing element by January 31st of 2023. So there's a chart here, and I won't go into too much detail about it, but the important parts to note are that we have our the first row, if you will, the six-cycle arena needs. These first three rows capture what we have to produce as a city over the eight-year period that I described a moment ago. And we have to produce housing at the various income levels that are shown in the columns here. So our total unit need is 2,946 units across the different income levels. And then we are also adding a 30% buffer to that, and that's at the recommendation of the State Department of Housing and Community Development. So adding in that 30% buffer, we come up with a value of 3,830 units that we're looking for. We are allowed to count a number of different pipeline projects, some projections about accessory dwelling units that we will produce over that period of time toward those numbers as credits. And so when you subtract off the credits, what you end up with are a requirement for 802 very low-income units, 299 low-income units, 389 moderate-income units, and our above-moderate arena requirement is actually met through the combination of our pipeline projects and ADUs. So we're looking at 1,490 net new affordable units. So we are looking at rezoning for up to 4,000 new units throughout the city. And the idea of rezoning for 4,000 new units is that the total would accommodate a mix of development types that would achieve the 1,490 affordable units needed. That may be a combination of all 100% affordable development projects. It may be mixed-income projects that have a portion that it's affordable and a portion that is a market rate. And it may be some developments that are market rate developments with the required BMR unit component. So it gives us the flexibility to meet that 1,490 affordable unit number. And we are looking primarily in council districts two through five. As you're aware, the general plan update in 2016 concentrated a number of developments in the Bayfront area of the city in District 1. And so the idea is to spread some of that development throughout the remainder of the city for this housing element cycle. There are five key zoning strategies that we're looking at to achieve our arena. So one would be to increase densities in the El Camino Real Downtown specific plan area and remove the existing residential cap in that area. We would also be increasing densities that are allowable in the affordable housing overlay that could be applied to any of the opportunity sites that are listed in the housing element, as well as any sites in the downtown specific, El Camino Real Downtown specific plan area. We'd also be rezoning commercial sites to allow mixed-use development, where as of right now, they would not allow residential uses. We're removing the minimum lot size to achieve a 30-dwelling unit per acre density on our three lots around downtown and reusing certain sites from the current housing element that have not been developed during this cycle. So I apologize, this is a fairly small map, but just to give you an idea of where our opportunity sites that have been identified are located, and to orient you, Bellhaven Bayfront area is on the right side of this map. Sharon Heights is to the far left. And you can see in yellow the various opportunity sites that are scattered throughout districts two through five. And so there's a total of 69 opportunity sites that are shown here. The majority of those are actually concentrated in the downtown El Camino Real area. And mainly, we're looking at sites that are between about a half an acre and 10 acres and located near transit or within a short distance to destinations like retail and personal services and grocery stores and things like that, that make walkable or bikeable likeability more appealing and a better option for these housing units. The purpose of this meeting, as the chair stated, is a study session, and it's to provide feedback on an introduction to zoning changes. No actions will be taken this evening, and staff will be using comments to prepare a draft zoning ordinance amendments to cover the zoning changes that were described, draft specific plan amendments, and then draft ordinances that would rezone certain housing opportunity sites to allow multifamily residential or mixed-use developments. And we would bring this back for review and recommendation to the city council at a January 12th, 2023 commission meeting. In general, the rezoning of the opportunity sites in the housing element has to happen within three years if the housing element is certified by January 31st of next year, or within one year if the housing element is not certified by HCD within 120 days of January 31st, 2023. We're looking to really do the zoning concurrently with the adoption of the housing element to provide the cleanest and most straightforward approach in implementing the project and to give some more certainty to developments in the future. And so the goal for now is to actually adopt that zoning, these zoning updates at the same time that we would be adopting the housing element. So you can see here a chart that is taken from the staff report, and just to show you, in red, you can see any densities in certain sub-districts of the downtown specific plan area that are less than 30 dwelling units per acre, and 30 dwelling units per acre is considered by HCD to be a default density that could provide affordable housing in a community and metropolitan jurisdiction like Menlo Park. And so in order to meet that default density that's set by HCD, we would be increasing the base density that would be allowed in the specific plan area to a minimum of 30 dwelling units per acre. And so you can see that in these first two columns after the sub-district name, we would be increasing. So for instance, downtown, the existing base density is 25 dwelling units per acre, and it would be going to 40 dwelling units per acre. Then the final two columns are showing the bonus density existing and proposed. And so for downtown, it would be going from the existing bonus level density of 40 dwelling units per acre to a proposed bonus density of 60 dwelling units per acre maximum, and so on for these sub-districts that are shown here. In addition, the permitted base and bonus floor area ratios and heights may also be increased to correspond with these increased densities. And so the intent of the increased FARs and heights would be to make residential development realistic at the increased densities that are shown here. The project team has prepared examples for the downtown and El Camino Real Northeast Low Density Residential Subdistress. Those are included in the staff report, and I'll quickly walk through those. So this table shows downtown development standards that are proposed. So you can see here, the column shows existing and then the proposed. For maximum base FAR and public benefit bonus FAR, we're not proposing a change from what exists there now. What we are proposing is something called a step-up base FAR and step-up public bonus benefit FAR. And so that would be really to encourage more residential development units with higher bedroom counts for larger families and more for sale units. And so that would be offered to developers who provide between 50% and 65% of the overall building FAR toward residential uses and a minimum of 50% of units with two or more bedrooms. And then of that 50%, 5% of the units would need to have three or more bedrooms. So for this sub-district downtown, the base step-up would be an increase in FAR of .15, and the bonus step-up would be an increase in FAR of .75. And the base residential density would increase from 25 dwelling units to 25 dwelling units per acre to 40 dwelling units per acre. And for the public benefit bonus density, it would increase from 40 dwelling units per acre to 60. Maximum heights for any building in the sub-district would increase from 38 feet to 50 feet for buildings with a residential density between 20 and 40 dwelling units per acre and 60 feet for buildings with a residential density between 40 and 60 dwelling units per acre. And the maximum height of a building facade along the street or public right-of-way would increase from 30 feet to 38 feet. I know that's a lot of information to digest. We prepared a slide here that shows an example of what could be developed on a one-acre lot in this proposed downtown sub-district. So what you would see is an FAR of 3.0, and that's 130,680 square feet. If the public benefit bonus step-up is utilized, and that would allow a density of 60 dwelling units per acre. So for this particular example development, you could get a retail component of 20,000 square feet, office 35,680 square feet, and then the residential use, which would be 57.4% of the building would be 75,000 square feet. And so in considering what the height would look like and what the building section would be, you might have a ground floor of 15 feet and a basement with some parking. The ground floor would have some retail and parking, second floor maybe office, and then three floors of residential above that. So you could end up with about 60 feet of height there. This diagram that's shown on the right-hand side of the slide is from the existing specific plan, and it's just to give you an idea of what the current regulations allow to be built on this site. So what you can imagine is actually some additional, two additional floors of residential above this, what's shown here in this diagram. So now to walk through another example, this is the Northeast Low Density Subdistrict. The middle column has the existing standards, and the right column shows the proposed standards. And so as with the downtown sub-district, the project team is proposing to keep the existing base FAR of .75 and a public benefit bonus FAR of 1.1. As with the downtown district, an increase in FAR called the step-up base and public benefit bonus would be offered to developers who provide more than 50% of the overall building FAR toward residential uses and a minimum of 50% of units with two or more bedrooms. And then of that 50%, 5% of the units would need to have three or more bedrooms. And so for this sub-district, the base step-up would be an increase in FAR of .5, and the bonus step-up would be an increase in FAR of .45. The base residential density would increase from 20 dwelling units to 20 dwelling units per acre to 30 dwelling units per acre. And the public benefit bonus density would increase from 30 dwelling units per acre to 40 dwelling units per acre. Maximum heights for any building in that sub-district would increase from 38 feet to 40 feet for buildings with a residential density of 20 to 30 dwelling units per acre and 50 feet for buildings with a residential density above 30 dwelling units per acre. And then the maximum height of the building facade along the street or public right-of-way would remain at the current 30 feet in consideration of lower density and smaller-scale uses that would be adjacent to that sub-district. So you can see here another example that's been prepared of what might occur on a one-acre lot in this sub-district. And so at the base step-up level with an FAR of 1.25, you could get 54,450 square feet of developable area, and a program for that might look like roughly 25% retail office and 75%, roughly 75% residential. So for that height and building section, you may have a basement with parking, a ground floor with retail and parking, some office and residential uses mixed on the second floor, and then that should say third floor, not fifth floor, a residential story. And so what you see in the diagram on the right-hand side of the slide is what is currently allowed in this sub-district based on existing regulations. And so you can imagine approximately one additional floor stacked above that for the updated standards. Other proposed specific plan changes would be development standards for six other sub-districts that I identified earlier in the presentation would be modified. The limit of 680 residential units in the specific plan area would be removed, and a minimum density of 20 dwelling units per acre would be required to set a basic floor for residential development. So if a project were to come in in the future, they would need to provide at least 20 dwelling units per acre as part of a residential development in order to be approved. Minimum parking rate in this area would be removed, and the maximum parking rates may be established where they don't currently exist. Moving on to commercial zoning districts throughout the city. So there's one district here that's shown in bold, and that's the C2B district, Neighborhood Mixed Use Restrictive. That is a mixed-use district that currently allows 30 dwelling units per acre maximum. And so the thought is to use its basic zoning regulations as sort of a model for mixed-use developments in these other, some of these other districts. And so you can see here, the proposed change would be to combine the C1A district, the C2 district with one exception, the C2A and C2S district, and potentially the C4 district into one. And so you would essentially end up with a more streamlined set of guidelines for all of these districts that are typically pretty small parcels adjacent to residential areas throughout portions of the city. And so there may be some some sensibility in combining those. For the C1 zoning district, that would become a mixed-use district, and it would add new residential mixed-use regulations to allow up to 30 dwelling units per acre on those sites. And then for the Administrative Professional and Research Restrictive District, C1C, the proposal is to maintain that and allow only application of the AHO or carve-out set up and identified for sites in that district. And finally, the office district. The office district that runs along Marsh Road, Bohannon Drive, Scott Drive, there's a portion there that we would look to rezone to a new office residential district, and it would be built primarily off of the base development, base residential development regulations for the RMU zoning district, which allows 20 to 30 dwelling units per acre maximum. Other commercial zoning district changes that we're looking at would be removing the 10,000-square-foot minimum lot size requirement for our three properties located around downtown. And then carve-out residential development would be permitted on certain housing opportunity sites, including included in the the housing inventory. And the intent would be to allow housing development on one or two acres that could be located anywhere on the 10 applicable parcels that have been identified in the draft housing element. So the final piece that we wanted to discuss is the affordable housing overlay. The affordable housing overlay was designed to encourage development of affordable units for very low low and extremely low-income households. And it would be expanded to include all of the six-cycle arena housing opportunity sites in addition to the specific plan area. It would be modified to work in combination with the state density bonus law on a site, which is a comment that we received from HCD that they should be working in combination. As they are right now, they work either one or the other. Either you can have the state density bonus, or you can have the AHO. And so we're revising that in order to make them compatible with each other. The AHO density bonus for any applicable site would be set at 55 dwelling units per acre minus the base density of the underlying zoning for the site. And so by applying the AHO, developments that qualify for the maximum state density bonus of 50% could achieve a development with a total density of up to 83 dwelling units per acre and 100% affordable developments that qualify for the state density bonus of 80% could achieve a development with a total density of up to 99 dwelling units per acre. So there is an example in the staff report that lays out how a one-acre site with a density of 30 dwelling, maximum density of 30 dwelling units per acre would get the 99 dwelling units per acre amount by following the formula of 55 dwelling units per acre minus the max density of the zoning district for that parcel. We also put together an idea, just to give you an idea of what would happen for the 50% state density bonus, how we get to the 83 dwelling units per acre, follows a very similar line of math here, with the exception that the state density bonus is 50%. So it'd be multiplied by .5 rather than the .8 shown in the top example. So next steps for zoning are that staff will use feedback from the study session to further develop proposed modifications to the zoning ordinance and specific plan. This is really an introduction. We want to get your feedback this evening and then continue to develop these into more formalized and more thorough regulations. So detailed ordinances will be drafted for review and recommendation for January 2023. tentative upcoming milestones to be aware of. On December 6th, the city council will be meeting to discuss the draft housing element and updates that are being made in response to comments that we received from HCD in October. The city council will be meeting to discuss the draft housing element um and updates that are being made in response to comments that we received from H C D in October. In the month of December, uh, we intend to release um the draft environmental justice and safety elements for public review. On December nineteenth, it will be the close of the draft S E I R public comment period that the chair mentioned earlier and that was uh. Discussed at the November fourteenth meeting of the planning commission. On January twelfth, the housing commission and planning commission would have a joint meeting to make uh recommendations to the city council on the various. Elements and zoning changes. And then January thirty first of twenty twenty three would be city council adoption hearing of the element um and the zoning changes. In order to make the H C D timeline of January thirty first. I know that was a lot of information, but um sure there's a number of questions we're happy to answer and I will return it back to the chair.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thanks for the thorough presentation. Thanks for all your work and the staff work and bringing this to us. Uh, next uh is going to be public comment. Before we move to public comment, do commissioners have any pressing? Clarifying questions for Mr. Smith? Or can you hold them until after public comment uh and go from there? Commissioner Barnes?
I do have a clarifying question. I'd like to understand um a little bit more about the carve out, what, what that was.
Yes, so the idea for the carve outs. Was to allow one to two acres of some of these, these large sites throughout the community or sites that have um. Particular um. Nuances about them that might make them harder to develop if they were developed, say it's a, a twelve acre site. What we heard from affordable develop, affordable housing developers was that um there's an interest in. A one to two acre parcel being kind of the sweet spot for development of affordable housing. So the idea was to make it a little bit um more feasible and more affordable to set a certain. Portion of a parcel aside. To accommodate affordable uh, to accommodate housing development that could be affordable housing and, and so there are ten sites. Um, that are identified in the housing element, ten of our opportunity sites would utilize that. So as an example, um. The Sharon Heights Shopping Center. Has a carve out with the idea that affordable housing could be developed on about one acre of that site. Um, and, and that was the rationale behind that, that kind of carve out idea.
Thank you. And to the chair, a follow up question for me. Mr. Smith, when you refer to affordable, is that affordable in the sense of a capital A which is. Sixty percent A M I and below, for instance, for T cap regulations, or is it a general? Moniker for things that have some type of reduced rent. What is, how, as we go through this meeting this evening? When we say the word affordable or affordable housing, what's the specific context in which you're using that?
Yeah, and we are talking about um a certain subset of um area median incomes. And so looking at the regulatory requirements um that are set up by, by the state.
And, and for the purposes of tonight's meeting, the staff have an A M I level that's an up to. That is the affordable, we had talked about ranges previously V L I and L I, is it? Uh, should I assume that it's L I and below? What's, what's the correct? What are you guys using as your um upper tier A M I? For affordable?
There might ask for uh, is assistant?
This is Jeff Bradley with M Group. Can I, can I tackle that one? Thank you.
Go ahead.
Um, thank you for the question, uh commissioner. Um, under California's uh state housing element law, we're obligated. Uh, to look, consider affordability within those four categories that Tom shared on the screen that uh reflect the arena, the reason. Regional housing needs allocation. So it starts off with very low, which by definition includes extremely low. Um, and then it steps up to low income, which maxes out at about, or maxes out at eighty percent of area median income. And then after that, it goes to moderate income, which, which goes from eighty percent to a hundred and twenty percent of A M I. Um, and so that's, that's the framework we're working with. And then everything over hundred and twenty percent A M I is considered. Above mo, above moderate, or we also refer to it as market rate essentially. So really, those are the, those are the four affordable categories.
Okay, great. So it's up and inclusive of moderate hundred and twenty percent A M I, anything all the way through to that. All right. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Any other commissioner clarifying questions before we move to public comment? All right, seeing none, uh, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Turner, to lead us through public comment this evening.
Thank you, Chair. Um, under public comment, each speaker may address the planning commission once for a limit of three minutes. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. If you are participating via Zoom, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in, please click star nine on your phone. If you have multiple speakers um on the same account or phone number, please let us know at the beginning of your comment and we will make sure. Each speaker has an opportunity to speak for three minutes. If you are participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. Um, and I do see a couple online hands raised, so we will start with Patty F. Patty, you should have. Here we go. Give me one second. Patty, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Okay, um, this is Patty Frye, um. Resident of Menlo Park for a long time and former planning commissioner. Um, I want to speak about um the, the. Housing shortage being related to jobs production and that if we don't address the allowable office. Then we're gonna keep staying in the mess that we're in now. I did a quickie, you know, back of the envelope calculation of those two examples shown before. And if you assume that the. Worker density, which uh Facebook and others have used as a, as a hundred and fifty square feet per worker. Um, then the, both of those projects, um, tho, both of those uh examples shown earlier. Produce a lot more jobs than the housing units and, you know, so that, that's not gonna, not gonna work. The specific plan in particular, when it was developed, um, allowed half of the F A R to be. Uh, office, that was an increase over what it was before. And that was a time when there was, the consultant said there was no market for jobs. Makes no market for office. So I think that, that in order to ensure that office doesn't overpower. And the number of jobs doesn't overpower the housing produced. Um, you have to change the amount of allowable office. Um, in, in um the zoning uh it, it everywhere. It just has to happen and um I, I don't see anything a, a, about that. Another thing is that in the, the specific plan um vision, visioning process, people were okay with higher heights. As long as that meant, and they were told it would mean more space around it. So I encourage any zoning changes to include in, include increased setbacks. Increased modulation, increased articulation. I was not able to be in the first part of this uh continued meeting and did not know. Uh, based on what was published that the um, there was a shut off of um. Of public comment on the S E I R and I just, I sent some information and some questions about the. Environmental impact report for that housing element. I don't understand the data about growth projections. They, they're very contradictory. And very confusing, but I'd also add that there's missing information on um. On page, the table on page three dash sixteen um about pending projects that makes it very. Incomplete and confusing and perhaps um misleading. So um please fill out that data and make it available to the public and to decision makers. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Seamless Bay Area. You should be allowed to unmute yourself now.
Um, good evening, planning commissioners and staff. This is Adina Levin and I. Always forget to double log out from work meetings and um, this is me speaking as a Menlo Park resident. Um. So um I have a number of comments um on this item. Um, uh, in, including um having been a part of the tail end of the downtown plan. And then having worked on uh Connect Menlo, um, which focused on the Bayfront area. And at that time, when Connect Menlo was done, the amount of uh zoning that was allowed. You know, by the Bayfront in an area that is less rich in transit and services was much more uh dense than what the city had. Just approved for the downtown area uh near uh, you know, so many services and amenities and uh transit. And, you know, since then, the federal government and the state and the region have put in two billion dollars to electrify Caltrain. So that transit rich is gonna be even more so. And so I would really encourage um. You know, when making changes to look at how much density that we allow in the Bayfront and have. You know, uh, no less in the core downtown transit rich service rich areas. Um. Uh, the staff report mentioned the letter that the city got from the Department of Housing and Community Development. From the state to our initial housing element submission that identified some of the challenges with the. Uh, quality and plausibility of development of some of the sites. And um, you know, the likelihood of that submission generating the amount of housing that would be needed. And so in making these changes, I would really urge um being, it's very proactive in order to enable more housing. That will enable us to overcome the deficiencies of our housing element submission. Um. I wanna uh uh echo something that the previous speaker said in terms of um a fifty percent F A R. Um, sounds like fifty fifty with housing and commercial, um, but that really is uh more jobs than homes. Um, so if we're looking to increase the number of homes, that's not the right balance. I, I don't, I don't admit to understanding all the numbers, but having. Uh, three stories seems pretty logically incompatible with getting some of the densities. That we would need to have the amount of, of uh housing, especially affordable housing that we need. And so I would wonder about making sure that there is a feasibility test for um what uh we can provide as a city. And what will be feasible to develop. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Mark Bryman. Mark, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Thank you, uh commissioners and, and staff. Thank you so much for your hard work and. And this is very, very important stuff and I think that. We, we, we need to get it right. And I think it's important that we take everything in, into consideration. I want to suggest that I was glad to hear that there was some potential parking. Uh, restrictions that were removed for downtown lots. Because let's face it, most of those lots are moms and pops and they are not acres or even half acres. We're talking about three, four, five, six thousand square foot lots and to park on site is, is virtually impossible. It, it, it precludes them from doing anything on those lots. And I would encourage. That we start looking into some. Uh, some, some parking uh for that so as to. Sort of centralize that parking. And anyway, I'm, I'm getting off topic. I, I just wanted to suggest that. When reading the staff report, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time to bring this up, but I wanted to strongly encourage that. In addition to the opportunity sites, we take a strong look at the low V M T alternative area, which I think. Uh, again, achieves a lot of what we're trying to accomplish here, which is to, to keep. Uh, to increase housing and to do it in such a way that is, is close to amenities and transportation. Uh, again, I don't know if this is the right time for that, but um. When, when making a recommendation to council, I would again strongly recommend that the low V M T alternative area is something that. That, that is considered. Uh, thanks again. Appreciate your, your, your work.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Karen Grove. Karen, you should be allowed to unmute yourself now.
Good evening, um, Karen Grove, Menlo Park resident. Um, I have two comments. One is I don't understand why we are limiting heights. Cause my understanding is very complicated, is that we're limiting heights at highest to five floors in the downtown area. And yet in the Bayfront, we, you, most of the buildings go up to eight floors. That seems backwards to me because we have much more accessibility to transit and services in the downtown. Um, my second comment is I really feel like I have sort of a feeling of deja vu that we're changing numbers and. Um, but I don't see any evidence that this will lead to development. Um, so my question is, it would be really reassuring to hear that the team has talked to developers. For profit and nonprofit and heard from them that yes, in fact, this plan is exciting and we would absolutely. Turn in project proposals and build housing in downtown Menlo Park. Um, and yeah, so those are my two comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Brittany Baxter. Brittany, you should be allowed to unmute yourself now.
Hi, thank you and good evening. I'm Brittany Baxter. I live here in Menlo Park in D three, actually pretty close to downtown. Um, so I'm really excited by this opportunity to kinda think about how downtown can be more vibrant, more exciting. Um, and thank you for all of your work on this because I know this has been a massive, really complicated project with all the math, all the sites, all the zoning. Um, I also just wanted to speak in favor of thinking about how we can really use those height limits strategically. Um, so like Planner Pearl to mentioned earlier, I think there's some interesting math to consider when we think about the number of units that we need to have. From a density perspective and how tall the building can be. Um, and I think that one thing that's pretty popular for downtowns is to have that ground floor retail. But if we have a thirty five foot height limit in some areas, that really limits us in terms of the housing that can go on top of that. Um, and I think a lot too about the specific type of housing. So you know, if we have a high unit count but a, a short cap. Um, we end up with a lot of studios and one bedrooms and I think um it would be nice to have a greater mix for folks that are sort of. You know, like myself, maybe in a middle stage of life where you're thinking about growing a family, you know, needing some more space for different needs. Um, and it, I think it is really sad when we, you know, often have to see a lot of people at that stage of life. Move out of the area, get priced out, um, not be able to stay working here or have their kids in school because they have to go somewhere else. Um, and so I think, you know, a lot of what's behind like the height limits is. An interest in keeping downtown looking the same and not being too scary with things and not having too much change. But I think it does actually result in a lot of change in our communities when we lose, you know, our friends and neighbors and, and people we like here in town. Um, so just being able to support more diversity through that increased height limit, I think is really great in terms of unit types, people that can live there, you know, the whole picture. Um, and I think there was one other thing I wanted to say, I totally forgot. Um, oh, and just in terms of, you know, the pace of change, I think there are a lot of questions right now, especially with um construction costs, especially with. Things in general about how likely it is that any of these parcels are actually going to turn over. Um, and one thing I like so much about, you know, living in the area is that it's really easy to walk to Caltrain. It's easy to walk to jobs and amenities. And so I think given the slow historical pace that the parcels have turned over at, you know, we're not gonna see a lot of like massive sea change on day one that this zoning goes into effect. Um, I think it will be gradual and I think that means that there's such an opportunity to make the most of each parcel as it does turn over. Um, and I also do kind of think as I, you know, move about downtown, there are definitely taller buildings downtown. Um, I think. I think all the time about this one, that's I think nine stories right across from Menlo School at University in Valparaiso. You know, that's there and it works really well within the community and I think we can support a bit more of that downtown as well, which is a really great spot to put those kinds of buildings. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Michael. Michael, you should be allowed to unmute yourself now.
Hi, this is Michael speaking. So I'm a Menlo Park resident. I live very close to downtown. I walk there pretty much every day. And I primarily want to echo prior comments that have been made on the height limit. I think downtown can definitely support quite a bit more housing and a higher height limit would go a long way towards doing that. In general, I just think downtown presents such a great opportunity given its close proximity to transit, to the Caltrain. And I think we should make the absolute most of it. I think a higher height limit would do a lot of good. I think the current proposed height limit is a little smaller. Karen Grove mentioned that the Bayfront has a higher height limit. And that probably is a better starting point than what we have right now. And I would love to see downtown, I would love to see us just build as much housing as we can fit on downtown as possible. I think I'm seeing a lot of people that I graduated with or my friends just move away from the Bay Area or move to other cities because they can't afford to live here. They primarily choose places that are a little bit denser because they have better housing, better chance of options, and they don't usually take places like Menlo Park that have not built very much housing in the past few years. So I'd love to see us take full advantage of this opportunity. That's my comment. Probably not as eloquent as some of the past ones, but I appreciate the work that the planning commission has done so far. And thank you.
Thank you.
At the moment, I do not see any more hands. There are no in-person public commenters. I'll leave it to you, Chair DeCarty.
Yeah, it's clear there are no in-person public commentators, but let's give it a second for anybody who was thinking there might be more coming before they wanted to raise their hands. Let's just give it a minute.
We do have another speaker. So Brian Kissel, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Great. Thanks so much echoing what others have said. We really appreciate all the hard work that the planning commission has been involved with the, the housing element. I do remember Jen Wilson sending out a summary of the response to the housing element and kind of characterizing the aspects of the housing element that needed to be addressed in order to be approved. Some of it was administrative, some of it was milestones, and some of it was viability. And I guess the question I have for the planning commission is across those three buckets of responses that we need to provide in order to get the housing element approved. Where are the big levers? So I'm hearing housing, height restrictions are a big part of it. Are there other levers that, you know, we as a, as a community can use to ensure that we, we do present back an updated housing element that will be approved by the state so that we don't end in, end up in the the builders remedy situation where we don't have an approved housing element. And then builders can come in and just kind of do whatever they want. So I'd love to hear some, some thoughts from whoever the right stakeholders are on the call to, to highlight what those actions that the planning commission can take to update our, our housing element so that we'll pass the state's review. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Katie Baruzzi. Katie, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hi, Council. It's Katie Baruzzi, our council, sorry, planning commission. Wrong night, wrong meeting. Thank you all for digging into this and giving it a good go over. And I wanted to echo so many of the comments that people have said before. You know, I lived in an apartment really close to downtown for the first 15 years of my time in Menlo Park. And I just, I think we could be doing a lot more. I lived in one of those scenarios that Brittany described of, you know, wanting to move into a larger place, wanting to, but wanting to be within walkable within walking distance of all the things that we cared about. And that choice just really wasn't available to us in Menlo Park. In the end, you know, we, I drove to the grocery store tonight instead of walking. Partly because, you know, there aren't nice three bedroom places that are close enough to town that we could afford. So I just encourage you to simplify the rules to be proactive when it comes to housing density downtown, because I think we have so many nice things that are coming to town already, like the guild, and we can make it nicer and more vibrant still. And I, I hear former Commissioner Frye's concerns about office space and I would encourage you to, I don't know what's going on in the background. Sorry. I would encourage you to go, to go deeper on the housing density and do whatever it takes when, in consulting with developers to incentivize more housing and not, maybe not so much office. And thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
At the moment, I do not see any more hands raised. So maybe one last chance. If you would like to give a public comment, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. No hands raised at this time. Chair DeCarty?
All right, we will go ahead and close public comment. Thank you, Mr. Turner, and thank you to all who have provided comment this evening. We're lonely here in the city council chambers, so I would love anybody to come in person who wants to at some point. There's my, my gratuitous pitch for, for future meetings. With closing public comment, we come back to the commission now. We have three commissioners in the chambers, four on Zoom. So open to any commissioner who wants to begin. Again, asking questions of staff, discussion and comment, but we are not coming to agreement and we are not voting on anything this evening. So whoever would like to begin, the floor is yours. Well, people are deciding, I actually do have a clarifying question which builds on a couple of the public comments. This is for staff. So we received a letter back from the state that had comments about our initial submission and some questions about whether, if that were our final submission, would be accepted or not. So my question is, all the materials that we have reviewed this evening, do they stack up to a final housing element that if it is submitted to the state would be approved? Yes. Okay, then we know what we're discussing. And if the answer is no, then what should we be thinking about as a planning commission? Because we're looking at something that actually would not be accepted by the state. So whoever on staff could help, at least me and perhaps other planning commissioners have that question in thinking about our feedback and comments this evening.
So thank you, Chair DeCarty. This is Deanna Cho, Assistant Community Development Director. So I think to, that we might be thinking of these in two different components. So the housing element itself as a document was submitted to HCD for review and comment. The focus of tonight's meeting is really sort of the implementation programs. So it's to help implement the help, it, the, the zoning is a program in the housing element to help achieve the numbers that we're talking about and identifying in the housing element, if that makes sense. So what we are looking today was not submitted to HCD for review.
I appreciate that. And that's a great clarification. So thank you for that. They are related though, so I do have a follow-up question. So they're related because these are essentially the mechanisms by which we would reach the goals laid out in the entire housing element. So I, so I guess I still think there's an underlying question that I have that still stands, which is as presented to us, these elements for implementation, would they successfully? All right. So let me ask the other question. Does the state care about this, what we're talking about tonight or not? Maybe that's my question.
Thank you, Chair Jeff Bradley with Consulting Planner, M Group, working for the city, of course. The answer, the short answer is yes. These zoning, these zoning changes are really implementing policies to encourage more housing over and above the opportunity sites themselves. As well, in addition to the housing opportunity sites, other, other properties that we've talked about through widespread zoning changes to encourage more housing on a broad, broad, broad basis. A lot of cities will wait until after the housing element is adopted and certified to do what these, what considered implementation measures. You know, the housing element says, hey, city, we're going to do all these great things. We're going to change our zoning. They usually give themselves a year or two or three to do that. Here in Menlo Park, we're doing it concurrently. And so to the extent we're doing it concurrently, HCD really likes that because it's, if we said we were going to do this four year, four or five years out, they'd say, yeah, that's a little too far out. You need to push that back to the first, first year or two of the planning period. So there's more time for these zoning amendments to take effect and have, have a tangible result on the ground with new housing. So it's, the, the timing of it is important and beneficial to the review of the revised element. Once we submit that to HCD again. And then the content, of course, is also important to HCD. And they will generally look favorably on these types of changes because a lot of this is proactive. It's not, it's not meeting a very narrow technical state legal requirement. It's really just encouraging more housing on a, on a general basis that, that supports the city's goals of meeting those actual RENA targets or requirements, the requirements now, really.
Great. Thanks to you both. For now, that's, that's very helpful. I appreciate it. And with that, we've got commissioners who are ready to go. I see Vice Chair Harris's hand up first.
Thank you, Commissioner DeCarty. Along those same lines, I guess I would have answered this last question that, that this is part of the housing element because we have 621 projected housing units from other land use strategies. And my understanding was that was from, from the downtown specific plan area. Is it, if, if, if I could ask through the chair for M Group to clarify that as well, that'd be great.
Thank you. I will pull in my colleague Asher Cohn, who's been very involved in this effort to clarify that question for us.
Hi, this is Asher Cohn with M Group. I'm sorry, I had a glitch out like halfway through your question, so I'll have to ask you to repeat it.
Okay. So I was just trying to connect what we're doing tonight to our overall goals of the housing element and to our submission coming up. And my understanding is that in addition to the opportunity sites, many of which are in the downtown specific area, this happened to be there, we also have an other land use strategy. This is based on table 727 dash two in the site inventory and analysis of the HCD review draft. Then my understanding was those other land use strategy number is 621 units and that the majority or maybe all of those would be coming from the downtown specific plan area. Is that correct?
So some of them will. The idea of those other land use strategies, it includes the downtown specific plan area that is not opportunity sites.
Correct.
There are areas of R3 zoning that are in the downtown area, which is a specific area noted in zoning ordinance. And areas with commercial zoning that would allow residential uses. So it's those three and we didn't analyze like what percentage, what proportion of the 621 would come from which of those three categories. But we said, we estimate with this increased allowance for development, we're going to see this number, 621 units, come from these land use changes that we're making.
Okay. And so I'm not sure, as you said, we're, we're not sure what proportion of that 621. I'm also can't recall how you got to that 621 number, but at any rate, there's going to be a number of projected housing units that we're going to need from the downtown area that are not part of the actual opportunity sites. And so there, and tho- those are listed as market rate units, not affordable, 100% affordable units. Is that correct?
Again, mostly correct. We don't necessarily need these 621 units, but we do foresee them potentially developing. We do not. In order to meet RENA, the market rate portion of RENA is entirely met by the pipeline units due to their already in proposal. So the 621 isn't necessary. It's more a saying to HCD, we're making these zoning changes. These zoning changes are going to have an effect and that's why we're making them because we expect them to have this effect on residential development. The reason they're allocated towards market rate is because HCD requires a much more detailed analysis. If we're going to say that we could see them going into a lower income or a moderate income. And since we already have that detailed level analysis with housing opportunity sites, we didn't want to then have this second layer of analysis that would frankly, just be confusing and be this kind of like tertiary part of the housing elements. We said, we think this development is going to happen. We want to acknowledge that we think it's going to happen. That's why we're doing these zoning changes. We're just going to put them in this market rate category because that's where it most appropriately fits with our overall housing strategy.
Okay. And we, but we would also assume that we would get some inclusionary units with that housing. We're just not making note of it. Okay. So we have a number of units that are going to be market rate that we're going to be expecting based on some of these zoning changes. And then we're also, we also have a number of units, or I'm sorry, a number of sites that are on our opportunity site list that are also in the specific plan area. And we're expecting those to be 100% affordable. Correct?
Yeah. Yes. So when we looked at all the parcels in the specific plan area, we, the ones that are in the housing opportunity sites, the ones that we think are the best sites for 100% affordable housing because of their size, because of where they're located, because of, yeah, all those reasons. So we just want to say that those are the ones that are we think are the best, that if, you know, in our conversations, the formal housing developers, the one, like what they gave us criteria, these are the ones that match that criteria, generally speaking. We just want to acknowledge that we are rezoning the entire area, not just those parcels that we thought were the best.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification and I'll, I'll come back to some of that later. I, I wanted to also touch on something else that, that Chair DeCarty was discussing, and that's this process. And I'm wondering if Mr. Smith, you could put that chart back up where you're talking about the timeline and the process for the housing element and the resubmission. I had some questions on that. Is that possible?
Yeah, let me, give me just a moment and I'll navigate to that.
I think we were talking a little bit about how does this meeting fit into that overall framework of what we're trying to accomplish and to have our compliant housing element submitted by the end of January. And I had two questions about that. As you're pulling it up, I'm talking and stalling till you get that pulled up. Perfect. Okay, so my understanding is that in order to have a compliant housing element, we also need to have a, we need to submit an EIR. And that, we have, we started and we've got a 45 day comment period for that, which should end at the end of December, right? December 19th, you've got it there. And that we have a, we started and we've got a 45 day comment period for that, which should end at the end of December, right? December 19th, you've got it there. And then we need to submit the revisions. My understanding was that we were supposed to submit revisions to give HCD 60 days to get back to us before the 13123 deadline. But this is what I'm seeing here is that actually we're not going to give them 60 days. We're going to submit it at the end of January and assume, I, I don't, I might be putting words in your mouth, but we're going to assume that it's going to be compliant. And so therefore we don't need that 60 days. Is that the thinking there?
Sorry about that. That was me. Jeff Bradley, again, if I may, through the chair, take us to have it. Commissioner Harris's excellent question. Yes, ideally, we would have a letter from HCD saying, we reviewed your housing element and we find it consistent with state law. And then some time period after that, we would bring it to the city council and they would, they would adopt it. However, state law is conspiring against us in several ways on this front that was, is unique to the sixth cycle and totally different from the previous cycles. Before HCD had 60 day review periods to review draft documents, new state law gave them 90 days for the first review. And then 60 days for the subsequent reviews. In Southern California, we're seeing two or three reviews from HCD, not just one or two. So that's totally beyond the city's control. There's a new requirement that every time we resubmit to HCD that there's a that, well, the first time we submit to HCD, there's a, there's a 10 day, excuse me, a 30 day public review period. That's new. And then every, every additional time we resubmit it, there's a, I believe, a 10 day or a, sorry, a seven day public review period. And then you lay on the EIR, which is also consistent with California Environmental Quality Act, another high level state, state law has its own timelines. And so we are, we are pushing past that January 31st deadline. However, having settled that, the city council is fully empowered under the housing element body of law. I'll let the lawyers speak to it more specifically if, if they wish. But essentially the city council is empowered to make their own finding of consistency with state law and adopt the housing element. Cause at the end of the day, the housing element is part of the general plan. And the general plan is the, the local government's planning document and laying out their own planning programs. And so they are authorized to make a finding of fact backed up with evidence that, that the document is consistent with state law. And then ask HCD to do their own independent review after that fact.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. So I guess what that says to me is we need to ensure that when we do submit that we, we don't get it bounced back again, because then we would be in that situation of the builder's remedy potentially. So I think, I guess my point is that we want to make sure that everything that we do for this submission is going to be accepted since we are going to be actually beyond the deadline. Is that
But
fair to say?
I would, I would amend that to say if, if the city council does indeed adopt the housing element by January 31st with, with, with a, a resolutions and findings as consistent with state law, the city would not be out of compliance with the deadline. The, the requirement is to have an adopted consistent with state law housing element by January 31st.
And if I may, Chair DeCarty, sorry, Mr. Bradley for interrupting you. If I may, Chair DeCarty, members of the planning commission, Mary Wagner, with your city attorney's office, Berg Williams and Sorances, I just want to echo what Mr. Bradley said. I think that's very consistent. You know, this, the statutory deadline to adopt the, the housing element is January 31st. HCD certification of the element is to say that the element complies with, substantially complies with state law. And as Mr. Bradley indicated, the council can make those findings. And I agree with you, Vice Chair Harris, that the, the absolute goal, and we believe that that's what we're going to accomplish, is to make the changes that HCD has identified to ensure that your element is compliant with state law and that the element that's brought forward for consideration and recommendation by the planning commission, the housing commission, and then adoption by the council does meet all of the state law requirements.
Terrific. Terrific. Thank you, Ms. Wagner, for making that clarification super helpful. So, and then I have one more question, and I think I was referring to a different slide that had a little bit more information about what we're doing tonight. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm mis- misremembering, but I, my, my last question on the, the milestones and the, the our plan timeline is at what point, so we're going to make some comments tonight. And then at what point is the city council, council going to take a look at the comments that we have made? And add their own comments. It seems that that should happen before we have the meeting on January 12th with the housing commission. I just want to make sure is, when does the city council get a chance to review the comments that we make this evening?
So through the chair, if I may, again, Deanna Chow. So the city council is scheduled to receive an updated redlined working draft document of the housing element in response to HCD's comments at next Tuesday's city council meeting. That will also be an opportunity for the city council to receive and review the planning commission's comments that are being presented here this evening. So we'll do our best to be able to summarize these comments. They do, they will have an opportunity to see, receive the staff report, but we'll have an opportunity to summarize the comments to our best ability for next Tuesday's meeting.
Terrific. That's super helpful. So you, as the staff will be, you'll be summarizing the comments and putting them in the report for the city council's review.
To the best that we can or presenting them at Tuesday's meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Let me pass the torch to somebody else. Thank you very much.
We have Commissioner Barnes next, and then we have Commissioner Schindler here in chambers after that. Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you. Good evening to my, to my fellow commissioners and other folks. The public on with us tonight. Thank you. So I'm still a little bit at the clarifying question stage. So just bear with me on that. And I'm going to go through the chair. That's permissible to, to staff and or the consultant. And I want to refer to table two in the staff report that is on page page six, excuse me. And so that I can make sure I understand what we're solving for through this process is our net deliverable as a city in order to satisfy the RENA numbers that we were given is to generate 991 units. Is that correct? At these affordability levels.
Tom, you want to?
That, that would be correct. That is the unit, the unit count that we need at the affordability for very low, low and moderate income levels without the inclusion of the 30% buffer.
Got it. And this is what HCD has said through, through, this is through RENA. These are the numbers that were given and should we accomplish, should the city accomplish the delivering of these units? And I'll ask in a moment about the timeframe on that. Should we accomplish that? Then we will have satisfied what we're being asked to do for RENA. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then as far as the buffer is concerned, the buffers, my understanding of the buffer, it's an overshoot so that if they don't get delivered, then, you know, worst case scenario, you come up with, if you go for 130%, 30% don't come through. So you deliver 991 and you, we will have satisfied our obligation. Is that correct?
Yeah. The idea is that to prevent having to go back and amend the housing element. Because certain sites that we, that we hope develops, don't develop as anticipated, we're providing that extra buffer so that we have the room to work within the existing house, housing element that we're going to be adopting.
Got it. So it's a forecasting number and a 991 is an actual deliverable for us. Okay. So setting, thank you for that. So setting that stage is, is this, tonight's meeting and, and this overarching discussion about the housing element in order to satisfy RENA is to solve for, for these 991 units. And a moment ago, Commissioner Harris was, was speaking to the pipeline projects. And then it was 621 units or in that pipeline. And is it fair, do I have this right? Is it fair to assume, say, for instance, it's a 15% BMR requirement? Just doing a map on that from 621 is 93. Is it fair to assume that 93 units from that 621 pipeline could be applied to this 991?
Potentially. I mean, I think that there are a lot of variables to that that could affect it, but in a very optimistic scenario, that could, that would be potentially possible.
If they hit the affordability levels, if they're anywhere from ELI, VLI, low and moderate, is, what would be the reason why if they you know, if, I assume there's a regulatory agreement associated with that, if they are all compliant and they're at the AMI levels that are called out, is there a reason why they wouldn't fit and deliver it in the timeframe that, that they need to be? Is there a reason why they wouldn't be able to be applied to the 991?
So they would, they, they would be able to be applied to the 991 as long as they are delivered as planned.
Okay. So how, so okay, great. So the 621 is a hypothetical. We have some, depending on who you speak with, or some level of degree of potentiality of those being delivered. But in a, but if those 621, I'll just do some math here, were to be delivered in 90, 15% of those were to be were to be BMR, then we would be down to about 900 units, total net unit. So all that's just for, I'm doing this because I'm trying to scope what it is we're solving for here. And I want to right size the, what we're doing for the problem that we're solving for as handed down to us. Okay. So those, thank you for those clarifications. I just wanted to understand that. I have some, I have some comments, but I'll come back on those in a moment. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Schindler.
Thank you. I, I think I'll take this opportunity to build on Commissioner Barnes' question because I'm, I'm still sort of, I'm still seeking clarification here. That 991 is all against an affordable target. But my understanding of, of the 621 in that table in the housing element is that the 621 is not assumed to be affordable housing. Is that a correct understanding through the chair?
That's, that's correct. These are units that we're looking at in addition. And they, as, as a result of the land use strategies that we described earlier, and so those would be market rate, but it's likely that there'd be a BMR component of those, the inclusionary units that would be required. Currently 15% is the number. So that would be some BMR units out of that total could be anticipated.
Got it. Thank you for clarifying that. I had a follow-up process question. We were looking at a timeline slide earlier through the chair, and I wanted to understand at which step in the process, whether it's the council meeting that's planned for next week or some other venue, the policies and programs that become the incentive for development get feedback and are discussed and potentially have the opportunity for this count, this, these commission, this commission to weigh in. I think we're, we're here tonight to talk about the, the zoning ordinances and the modifications, the specific plan that essentially loosen limitations that we put on development. But I'm also very curious and highly motivated to understand what we will do to incent the development. So could, could staff please clarify when we get to here and potentially give input and when the public will be giving input on those programs and policies? Thank you.
So at the council meeting next Tuesday on December 6th, there will be some evaluation of, of programs. We have essentially sort of a working draft of the housing element that's been updated to address HCD comments. And it's definitely a work in progress, but the, there are policies, programs that have been updated to address those comments that we would anticipate the public and council being able to respond to those and give us some direction at that meeting. And so that is the, the nearest opportunity, I think, that, that we would anticipate having feedback.
And one follow-up question to that, please. Is there an expectation that we would get feedback on from, whether it's from council, from the public that the modifications, we would, feedback on the programs and policies that would require us to iterate on these zoning and these zoning modifications?
Right. So at the, at the February, sorry, at the December 6th meeting, we are asking also for council to look at the zoning. And I, I think Ms. Chow touched on this a moment ago, but they will be looking both at the, the draft housing element and the zoning discussion that's happening this evening. And so if there are policies that they, programs that they desire to change that may affect aspects of the zoning, we can look at those comprehensively at that meeting.
Thank you. Very helpful.
Commissioner Riggs.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. I have five, I guess, really their questions as much as anything. And I apologize if they seem to be piling on here, but a little more clarification for me at least on the 621. These are from, these are the cycle five unused sites. Is that correct?
These are actually land use changes that are being proposed above and beyond. So we have, we have 69 housing opportunity sites that are listed in the housing element. And above and beyond those sites, we're looking at implementing zoning changes in the specific plan area. And we think that outside of the housing opportunity sites in the specific plan area, there may be other sites that would develop those 621 units.
But they are specifically in the specific plan area.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
If I may, through the chair, we did get a clarification from Asher that there was three categories within the, within that 621. The non, the non-housing opportunity sites within the specific plan. The R3 zoning parcels also within the downtown, but not necessarily all within the specific plan. Correct me if I'm wrong on that. And then other areas not in the downtown that have commercial zoning that would, under the new housing element, allow residential and mixed use development. Thank you.
All right. So Mr. Smith, in your introduction, you indicated that there were unused cycle five sites. By any chance, were these sites rejected because they were less favorable to the community?
What do you mean? Can you explain rejected?
Well, staff would propose, for example, 41 sites. And in the end, several years ago, council might have whittled that down to 33 sites. And they would have had their reasons. So am I correct that these five sites were the ones that were not selected to submit for RENA and for cycle five?
Actually, they, they were part of the RENA five cycle, but they didn't develop during that cycle. And so
Oh, oh, you mean they're, they're part of the, the ones we can count again because they aren't actually projects.
Right.
Okay. All right. Sorry to have missed that. All right, sorry to have missed that in the staff report. Regarding the proposed increases in density, in particular, in the specific plan. And more importantly, the increase, the necessary increase in height to allow for that. You indicated that there would still be the thirty foot facade requirement. Addressing the street. I believe there were also step down requirements where a given zone was adjacent to lower density housing. Would this step down at the? Interface with. Existing lower density housing be maintained? In your proposal?
I believe the idea would be. To maintain that transition towards lower density residential uses. But certainly looking for feedback on that as well.
It seemed to be very important to the neighborhoods at the time and. Through. Well, my. Of course, my involvement dates back even prior to the specific plan. So I heard those comments rather repeatedly. And it was one of the. I guess you could call it compromises that. We, meaning the commission and staff made. To. The adjacent neighborhoods. As part of promoting the specific plan to begin with. I know I, for one, would hope that. That step down would be maintained. Just at that, at those particular interfaces. Then I'd like to ask. And perhaps this is. Consistent with at least one speaker tonight. That. While we're making these zoning updates largely to enable the housing element. That we incorporate proposed updates. Specifically discussed and proposed by planning commissions in meetings in the past. One reason that I bring this up is that. I'd say roughly between two thousand and five and two thousand and ten. There were probably half a dozen. Suggestions that came up more than once. For zoning revisions that would be consistent with. Frequent discussions and conclusions at Planning Commission, but as the chair has pointed out over the years. We have projects which come to Planning Commission, and I mean primarily residential projects. And projects that do not, based on whether lots are conforming. So. The fact that the Planning Commission had, at least until the last couple of years, developed a pattern of protecting the neighbors. But that it did not apply to fifty percent of the sites in town because they didn't come to Planning Commission. This is inequitable. But where these suggestions are reasonable. It's rather difficult that we are abstaining from applying them because they cannot be applied generally under the zoning code. This would be the right time to add these to the zoning code. Between roughly two thousand and five and two thousand and ten, that roughly half dozen suggestions. Were. Repeatedly deferred until the next. Until the next zoning update. And when that next zoning update came around. They were all forgotten, each and every one of them. So what I would like to ask is that some. Relatively agreeable. Changes to the residential zoning in particular. That have been raised. Over the meetings at this point, over the last fifteen or more years. Be assembled and proposed as part of the zoning updates. I apologize if this requires a bit of history. But I do not apologize for remembering that commissions passed were told that these changes would be updated. And that that was not done. I would. Also like to just make an observe observation as an architect. Regarding our affordable housing overlay. Where, for example. We, under current zoning, which reflects recent updates that is in the last six years. We have thirty dwelling units per unit, per acre allowable. Which, for the most part, is not actually built in Menlo Park. It's it's still a relative rarity. That the housing overlay would allow that to go to ninety nine dwelling units per acre. I can tell you from having worked on an urban project of ninety nine dwelling units per acre. That pretty much everyone on the architectural team, and we're talking about people who lived in studios in San Francisco. Pretty much agreed that they wouldn't want to live there. Ninety nine units per acre is very dense. So I think it helps for all of us just to keep that in mind. And where it's not in mind, perhaps to. Search. A project at that density and really take a look at it. So finally. I would like to. Just. Make an observation and a request. My observation is that with the buffer, we're talking about what what we really need here. Is eleven hundred. Units with a buffer that are in low and very low categories. Frankly, the moderate category is not going to solve what speakers tonight. Have referred to and what speakers have referred to. With every housing project. And with every housing element discussion that this commission has had, every one. Which is that. The community believes that the housing element is generating affordable housing. This is what they believe. And yet we only have to look at. The pipeline construction or recent construction. To see that where. Affordable housing is built in the hundreds. The above moderate housing is built in the thousands. This is what is actually happen. Happening. When we zone for housing and projects come forward. Now, why would that be? If you look at the zero to fifty percent AMI. That is by far. Our largest requirement. Under Rena. With the buffer, we need eight hundred and two units. Another three hundred units. Are in levels above that, which, by the way, includes. Fifty one to eighty percent AMI. At eight hundred thousand dollars per unit. Which is. What the cost is for affordable housing units. There is no. Mathematics in the world. Not even using digital currency. That will allow units to be built. Even on free land. That can be then rented. At an affordable rate. All of these eight hundred and two units. That we need to commit to here. And we're only zoning, we're not building them. But realistically, we need to observe. That they will all be subsidized. And not a small amount subsidized. Very significantly subsidized. So. I throw that out just to try to help align. Public expectation. With the housing element process. And the reality. Of. How what is needed in town? And. How Katie Berusy would have liked to find a three bedroom apartment downtown. That was affordable. But couldn't. This housing element. Is only going to provide an affordable three bedroom or encourage of affordable three bedroom apartment. If they are built. And if they're subsidized. And certainly at ninety nine units per acre, they won't be three bedroom units. I recall laying out the units in that. Project that I described earlier, and none of them were three bedroom or close to it. So finally, I just wanted to request of. This group and. I guess of city council. That where we find lots to upzone, we do reflect some of the input that we heard tonight. Particularly regarding. Being focusing on transit rich areas. We certainly know that. We do not have the. Roadway infrastructure to support the housing that we already have, let alone the offices we already have. As Patty Fry indicates, if you keep building offices. You also add to the demand. For housing. I seem to recall some rubric about when you find yourself in a hole. Step one is to stop digging. But I I won't pursue that. So. At least emphasizing on the transit corridor seems. Very important. I hope we will thus have at the low end of the priority. Our more remote R one neighborhoods. And I hope we will also put. Relatively low on the. Priority of choosing and promoting sites. A housing overlay. Expectation that could allow for up to ninety nine dwelling units. So those are my comments, and thank you for bearing with me.
Commissioner Barnes.
Thank you again. Through the chair. Question to staff. And I want to make sure I understood. A previous. Comment and what I think I know about the staff report, and that is. In the staff report, figure three, attachment A. Which is the potential housing opportunity sites that we've been talking about for some time now. These are sites that. Are found to be the most suitable for projects. Which will be can, which will be a hundred percent affordable. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, that's correct. We're looking at sites that are primarily between a half an acre and ten acres in size. And that could accommodate thirty dwelling units per acre roughly or greater.
So and and by saying a hundred percent affordable. All the residents in there are going to be anywhere between zero to a hundred and twenty percent. AMI, we we confirmed that earlier. So it's less of a question, more just about repeating of that. Where I have a, where I just. Don't quite understand from. The mechanics of how this would work. Cueing off of what Mr. Rigs had said a moment ago about rent subsidies, in fact. When you get down to these low AMI levels of zero to thirty, thirty to sixty. There's often, you know, vouchers associated with this, there's there's rent subsidies associated with this. And there's tax credits to make this work and. There's usually a county bond or something like that to fill it in with a bunch of HCD supernova. Programs that you apply to, it it's a, it's a process. But the net of it is, is there's, there's AMI restrictions on it, in other words, for for tax credits not going above sixty percent. We've got all the up to a hundred and twenty percent AMI, so. What I don't necessarily understand is who, how these. You know, eighty to one twenty units get delivered, there there, there really isn't money for that quote, missing middle, there aren't subsidies associated with them, they don't qualify from the AMI standpoint, they don't get red subsidies. So. My question in here is, is the provisioning of the moderate mostly going to be a function? Of. Inclusionary, they'll come with an inclusionary requirement, so that's how you get your moderate. Well, help me to understand this a little bit better and certainly correct me where I'm. Not getting how these are delivered.
If if I may, Tom and the chair, and try to answer Commissioner Barnes' question. What we find in in housing policy is exactly what you observed. The moderate income category is actually the most difficult. Category to adequately meet the Rena numbers over the last. Four or five cycles. At least in the Bay Area. And it's just like you said, the market rate is building housing, it's more expensive than that. Most of the real estate, residential real estate is dominated by the market, the the private sector. Market rate development. So those numbers are are usually off the charts in compared to the arena requirements. The nonprofit sectors, inclusionary zoning, the mandatory affordable development can. Chunk away on the the very low and the low income and. You know, some cities make good progress, some cities make little progress or halfway progress, but you'll you'll consistently see a big dip. When it comes to the moderate income category. Because the affordable housing developers. Aren't necessarily, don't necessarily think of that as the main. Need. And and it's, and it doesn't fit the the market rate profile. So as a practical matter, what happens is. Some of the lower end costs of of what's technically market rate development, these could. Be units that are, you know, smaller by design or more affordable by design because they're smaller, such as ADUs. Efficiency units, things that. Don't necessarily have a deed restriction in terms of affordability, but will will tend to have rents that do indeed. Fit that eighty to hundred twenty percent income bracket. And so that's. Sorry, it's kind of a long answer, but I just wanted to. Acknowledge your point, but then also explain some of the challenges around around that, and that is. And that is a big reason why we hear so much about the missing middle is because. That eighty to one twenty and plus a little bit higher, up to one fifty, a hundred and sixty percent is generally considered the missing middle, and there's just not a lot of. Ability to address that with the tools we have now.
Thank you, and I think a practical, thank you for that, Mr. Bradley, and I think a practical result of that is when we say these are this. Housing opportunity site list. Is targeted for a hundred percent affordable, if in fact, these, if in fact, their developments that happen there are a hundred percent affordable, I think what we'll see is deep affordabilities. In these units, in these projects, should they get built. But the moderate spinning out to other, you know, other projects, and I just want to set that as an expectation for the community. What, so let me bounce off of of that and do some of the. Some of the zoning discussions were to be having this evening and some of the the comments from. The community. We've heard a lot about height. And. I think height is is a is a excellent way to get density. I also know that from a planning perspective, when you have height, you also have commensurate. Provisioning of open spaces, be it public or private, you've got circulation elements, you've got sales, you've got more of a. Master planning, interconnectability between parcels and between spaces. In where you get height on a particular parcel, it's generally not end to end, you have the ability to either access. Adjacent open space, you build it onto the parcel, so. Height. Coming into an infill. height coming into an infill situation needs to be handled well. Because height for the sake of height in infill locations doesn't provide the sense of space that is is needed or is commonly used. You know, if we take, for instance, Connect Menlo. You say what you will about different elements of it, the the density, the height that was included from a land use perspective also had requirements, very extensive requirements on the surrounding area. And again, those those the portions of open space, be it public and private, be it sales, be it circulation, be it place making. So we need to in the development standards, when we talk about adding height, we also need to also make sure we've got best practices. So accompanying that height, which will bring density, there's also commensurate attention paid to these elements of place making because one without the one without the other is not a successful plan. So my recommend, so I've got a number of recommendations for council and one of them is you know, be it the height that's proposed by staff this evening. Be it other heights, increased height, whatever that height is, there needs to be thoughtful recognition of the other factors that go with adding height and therefore adding density. And those development standards should those development standards should be clear and it should be relatable to the height that we're we're contemplating for any of these sites. Also and and you know, as a back end of that council needs to look at these development standards needs to look at within a large parcel, what's the law coverage? And what gets done with the rest of the the area. The other piece in this is the nexus between the density, regardless of where this density takes place in the city. The nexus between density and recreational fields. And just to talk as a citizen, you know, I'm an adult. I play in rec leagues for sports. It is close to impossible to get evening rec time for sports. I have a son who plays multiple sports. It is very difficult in the city of Menlo Park to find sports. There's a lot of competing interests. You know, and I was looking before tonight's meeting about what's happening with kids engaged in sports. And not only have we seen a precipitous drop in the engagement of elementary school kids, middle school and high school kids in after school activities and sports. We've seen a prediabetic condition increase by forty two percent. We are not over resourced in Menlo Park as it relates to facilities. And there needs to be a nexus as it relates to adding housing to what is a best practice. What are the ratios we're going to look at in terms of the availability of fields or recreation facilities? Of outdoor venues to increases in housing. I want more housing. I also want there to be a nexus between that and recreational facilities. So that's the second request that I have for council is to develop and articulate in within the development standards, what a commensurate nexus between new housing units and recreational facilities. And I'll start with a baseline for where the city currently is and what it would look like on a go forward basis. Because again, one without the other is not progress. It's regression. The other piece that I have is you know, we've had we've had well, let me back up. If we, if you look at it's what I'm going to talk about now is is live work play and what it is that we originally, because we're talking about the downtown specific plan this evening. You know, one of the original tenants was that concept of live work play. And how to make downtown more vibrant. So what we know to be true about downtown Santa Cruz Avenue is vibrancy is a function of daytime foot traffic and evening for traffic. One without the other, you cannot have a vibrant commercial area. So as we talk about commercial being undesirable. We I I would, we need to have as a lens for what generates the daytime foot traffic, what generates lunchtime foot traffic, and then what generates evening for traffic and how that mixes between you know, where the, for instance, residential and office. And if you if you overindex for residential, you simply don't get the vibrancy. And that is shown over and over in studies in terms of how commercial corridors flourish or don't. So I don't, I don't see commercials being the problem here. As a matter of fact, I I I think some, I think we need to learn from the downtown specific plan and one of the issues with that plan is that when you have a development there, you have, for instance, limits on what product type can be in that building. So for instance, it's you have a maximum of fifty percent office in any one building. So what you have, what you ended up with in on Santa Cruz Avenue was a situation where you had retail on the first floor, you had an office component, then you had residential. The fact is, in the development community, there's very few developer which are good at all three product types. You are an office builder or you're a residential builder when you're building a building, the type the plate types, the way it's built, the materials, the configuration of it is different based on the product type that you're building, particularly between office and residential. So when you try to take three product types and put them in one building or two product types, you know, for take retail off the floor, you know, out of discussion. But when you try to, when you make a requirement that you can't be all office or all, you can't be all office. You now create buildings that don't get built because of step back requirements and the difficulty of making these things pencil because you've got multiple product types. So what I would say is, instead of having on a parcel by parcel basis restrictions on what you can do, for instance, from an office perspective, have on a plan basis what you want to see there, but allow for the individual projects to be one particular product type to make that successful. And then next to it can be a different product types. You got an office here, you got residential here, but you end up with a mix across the the plan. And I don't, you know, it was perfectly evident in the diagrams we were seeing earlier, where you had these wedding cake type of buildings, which accomplished nothing because economics don't work because you've got, you know, you've got different product types. You don't get enough critical mass of anyone used to make it economically feasible. So my recommendation to council is, and for for the purposes of this evening, as part of the development standards review for the downtown specific plan is we remove the fifty percent restriction on on a particular parcel, allow it to be a hundred percent, but in turn keep whatever office restrictions we have across across the entire plan. So allow the individual ability to be successful and allow the area to be successful. So those are my three pieces, one on height, one on the the nexus between recreational facilities and housing and also the restrictions within the downtown specific plan on on specific parcels and what you can do there. And I don't, commercial is not the enemy here. Commercial is a very important piece of the puzzle in terms of vibrancy for any particular area. Those are my comments for now. Thank you.
Other commissioners. Commissioner Barnes, your hand is still raised, but I'm assuming you want it lowered.
Let me give me the mic back. I'll talk for another ten minutes. Just kidding. Thank you.
All good. I'm fine going a little bit on this with some broad comments. First of all, I just want to congratulate and thank staff consultants for the work on all of this. It's an extraordinary amount of effort through a really difficult time pandemic, changes and requirements from the state. And what we all feel is a as a not only just a legal obligation, but a moral obligation to address the inequities that we see all around us every day. And I know we're all working toward that. I just want to recognize that effort by the the staff and all of this and the consultants, and thank you for that. And I then would say, my broadest comment for you all and for us and for the city council is that directionally, bravo. Fabulous, directionally. All the pieces that you're looking at are absolutely headed with the right kinds of principles and the right kinds of paths forward to be able to try to help address what is a really, really difficult problem because we are so far behind. You know, Commissioner Riggs's point about digging holes, our hole is quite deep. Even if we stopped digging today. And then I think the other thing for me on my feedback would be directionally good, but directionally further on all of these elements. That we can get tripped up because we get this guidance from the state about what we should be doing at a minimal level here. And then we say, well, we're going to meet that. But that is not what is the moral responsibility we have as a community for the type of community we want. And we're talking about the built environment, but the built environment is for the people. And I come back to wanting to have neighbors who work in our community that my family and my children can bump up against the families and children of people who work in restaurants and who teach in schools and who provide essential services. That's the ultimate definition of a vibrant community. And that's what we need to keep in mind as a north star. So this is for all of us in presenting this, but it's absolutely for the city council and considering what we're trying to build toward. This is a floor, what we're looking at, not a ceiling for what we want to accomplish as a community. And I think that's a really important principle to keep in mind, or else we end up talking about numbers like six hundred or eight hundred. But even if we achieved all of that, it would not actually achieve this broader goal. We would still have a lot of the same problems that many of the commentators made this evening. And so I want to thank the public comments. I want to thank Commissioners Riggs and Barnes for doing a really nice job of laying out some of the dilemmas, some of the trade offs that are absolutely in the mix as we look at these things. For me, then specifically, I know that height can absolutely be an issue for a community that is used to seeing two and three stories walking around downtown and that people who've lived here a long time. And everybody who travels in any direction, north or south, can pick out their favorite example of a building, a mountain view or Redwood City and say, oh, my goodness, I never want to see that in Menlo Park. But you could also go to any of those communities and see fabulous examples of six, seven, eight story buildings, some who have been there in those communities for like a hundred years. And they look fabulous. They fit in the community beautifully. And I appreciate Commissioner Riggs's point about having a high rise next to a single family house. But that's exactly what you have in a bunch of these communities right around us all the time. And it's beautiful. And has everything to do with Commissioner Barnes said, which is what are you putting around that for open space, for circulation, for step backs, for modulation, for having scale and size of materials that makes it look like it works in a community, all the things you all know about as planners, developers and architects. And that can absolutely work. And we have to have some courage as leaders in the city to say, you can have downtown six, seven, eight stories. And it can look fantastic. We can also have downtown three stories that looks horrific. So let's focus on the eight stories looking great and not focus entirely on height first. I think that's a key element in this. On the density piece, I appreciate Commissioner Riggs's point about a hundred units per acre and no, you're not going to get three bedrooms in there. But there is really interesting and really cool and really innovative design. And somewhere in our community, that fits, not everywhere, but somewhere. And we should make that available as an option for folks. You know, I I really appreciate both Commissioner Riggs and also former Commissioner Fry pointing out that there are ebbs and flows that happen in our community here and that it wasn't too long ago that we were assured that we were never going to have any commercial development. We didn't have to worry about it. Twenty years ago, you come out of the Great Recession, you know, before Facebook moves in, all that kind of stuff. Well, where are we going next? This is supposed to last for a while here. And this gets to how people move around. And what transportation looks like and where the things that we move around in get housed is going to completely change. And so I really applaud what is a complete reversal from what we've had in place forever here. And we should keep on leaning into this, which is there should be parking maximums. And there shouldn't be any parking minimums. And we should really let the developers in the market decide on this because so many people are going to choose not to own cars and they're going to choose to do different stuff. And if we do it in that way, we will finally start getting the right feedback loop for the demand. So that when we're talking about putting this density in these transit corridors that we have right now, our transit corridor only goes one direction, north, south. It's terrible east, west. That's that's not good enough. So where are we looking, city council, at the circulation decisions here that actually make it viable so that in order to get the daytime foot traffic that Commissioner Barnes talked about downtown, you actually don't have to get in your car and park it in a parking lot down there. You can actually get back and forth by some other means. You can walk it, you can bike it, you can electric bike it, you can get a really easy and safe and nice looking shuttle to be able to make that happen. We've got to put that all together. And it gets frustrating as a planning commissioner, back to Commissioner Riggs's points, that we end up seeing these things in piecemeal and never get the opportunity to be able to talk about it holistically in that mix. But in the pieces here that we have, get rid of the parking restrictions. Yes, on the density, yes, on the height. I wish that our city council had the courage to actually open up more publicly owned land so that we could actually get more density that would be cheaper in this mix. We're sitting right now in an antiquated building that nobody is in except one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of us right now, next to a library that we had a proposal potentially to build a new one. So when we have this reflexive, let's not look at land that is owned by the city and let's absolutely not take out open space. I think there are creative solutions in there. We could keep all the open space right around here in Burgess Park. And you could still end up deciding to redevelop a library in a city council chambers and put a boatload of affordable housing with it if you had the courage to look at it. And this is the moment for the courage. This is the opportunity set that opens up what we could be doing over the next eight years or over the next two decades as a city. And if we don't do it now, we're not going to get around to doing it and trying to tuck it back in on the back end. So the reason to do this right now, if we're going to look at this about zoning, and it's sort of a mini opening of the general plan is have the courage to open it up to actually create the community we want in the future. Will there be fights around particular parcels? Sure. That's fine. Let that happen at that moment, but don't close down that opportunity on the front end. So bravo to you all for what you've done with this. Have the courage to go farther in addition to the direction on all of this. And as a principle, keep in mind our moral commitment for the community we want with the people in it that the built environment is creating. And let that be our north star. That's my feedback on this and for the city council this evening. Commissioner Harris.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. I just also wanted to thank the staff and the consultants and the public for weighing in. I so I say this every time, but I so appreciate people taking the time to call in and showing the interest in our city and where we're going. And for the staff, thank you. You have made I think as Chair DeCarty said, a really great start on this. I, I just, and I also wanted to thank you for having a starting. At first I didn't understand, why are we starting with the downtown specific plan area? But I think it really makes a lot of sense because this is the place, this is the best place in the city for us to build. So let's make it easier to do that. Let's. Let's increase the heights. Let's get that density. So we do have the walkability, so we do have a vibrant downtown. Specifically. We should really be starting right out of the gate with those downtown parking lots. That should really be our focus. That is the best option, the best. The best idea that we have, given that the land is free. That we own the land. And I would like to see us. I, I understand there may be a. Ownership issue, but we need to resolve the ownership issue, develop a plan, have a clear RFP process. That is very transparent to developers and so we can get that moving. I think that is really our best option. All the other sites. As Commissioner Riggs pointed out. Are going to be really difficult to get. To get a hundred percent affordable at the low and very low. We're going to need to think of some really creative solutions. But I think starting with the downtown parking lots is the best place for us. For the rest of the area, the, the market rate where we would also have inclusionary in this area. I'd also like it to be easier to build. I spoke with a number of developers, I think I spoke with three. Market rate developers and a couple of nonprofit developers. And I heard a lot of the same things from many of them. There, they really want to see the process streamlined. They want to make fees and fee waivers very transparent. Reduce the complexity and the requirements. And. Increase the staffing. Right now, I know that we are without a development. Director and planning. But we also, if we're looking to build more. We need to not only staff where we're supposed to be, but increase the staff in order to facilitate building. So I'd like to see, I'd like to see how that can happen. And that would be my recommendation to city council as well. I think I'll leave it at that for now. Thanks.
Commissioner Tate.
Good evening. Excuse me, I said a good portion of what I. My opinion last week, well, the last time we met and. And I'm still just like Vice Chair Harris and several others really on the parking lots and. Our civic center, because those are, to me, low hanging fruit because we do own the land. I can remember, I don't even remember what year it was now that I joined the Housing Commission. But my very first Housing Commission meeting, a gentleman came in and in the general comments. He spoke about using the parking lots as housing. Excuse me, and here we are all these years later and we are still reluctant, gun shy. To even explore this really and earnestly explore it as an opportunity and. And really that kind of amazes me because Menlo Park can really be a frontrunner here. And of course I do believe that the density should be higher, which I stated last time we met. To the hundred dwellings per acre. All developers won't want to go for that. But if it's good for District One, it should be good for an area that already has the infrastructure there. And as Ms. Levin discussed earlier, all the money that's been put into the, to Caltrans. That's a perfect opportunity. You can walk to the store, all the things that we believe are, are wonderful and are charming downtown. Well, our charming downtown needs to change slightly so that it's more inclusive. And being able to put in more housing there definitely makes that available for other people. I was thinking, let's see. What, when is the last time I actually walked to the grocery store or to get something to eat? That I, you know, where I had like a pretty wide selection and I don't have that. And for someone else who, who. Would be interested, and I'm saying only because I, I own my home, but someone else who may be interested in, in being right there in the thick and, and on El Camino can get to work easily. Can, can walk downtown, that would be lovely. And it was that way, I did use to live in San Francisco and I love that. That aspect. I. I think there are many cities that have done this well. And I don't know if that means that. That we need to do some more exploration on what other cities have done. And maybe you have to look outside of California. We already know Portland, Oregon is a, is a good example of how they've upzoned and, and really made the mixed, mixed use work. And then big metropolitan cities have done this also and been doing it for years. Although I do understand or agree, I should say with Chair DeCarty and how transit is kind of messed up when you're going. East, west, but it works north, south. But we have, I'm sure that transit is trying to look at how to improve that also. I just feel that we are being gun shy and we need to be frontrunners and get out of our small town charm that. That is not a welcoming, inclusive place to be. And that's pretty much all I have to say at this point. Thank you.
Commissioner Barnes.
Thank you again. Couple of questions in no specific order. You have a question through the chair to the. Either consultant or staff. I'm curious, how many? Cities. In the last cycle. Met their arena number. And to the extent anyone has a crystal ball, what might be a forecast for the percentage of cities? In this next cycle that might meet their arena number? Either those data points would be great.
In the, in the previous. Cycles, Commissioner Barnes, you're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, I guess a past performance is an indicator.
Thinking of the fifth cycle, which is the one we're in right now. At the halfway mark. In response to a, a new state law, HCD basically. Graded or ranked or judged all the jurisdictions on their progress towards meeting the arena. At the halfway point, so the four, at the four year mark of the eight year planning period. And Menlo Park was one of the few cities in the Bay Area. That was on target, on track to meet the arena, meaning they had built half. Or more of all, of all the housing units at all the different affordability levels. And that was very rare. Most of the, most of the hundred, the majority of the hundred cities in the Bay Area were on the list. Which were then subject to what's known as SB thirty five projects. Cities that haven't met their. Milestone target at the halfway point are subject to. Very, very aggressively streamlined housing projects based on objective standards. But to answer your question, the great majority of cities. Were not at, we're not at that. At that level at the halfway point.
And Menlo Park was.
Correct.
Okay. And I don't know what the future holds. But I want to back into this in terms of we, we usually open our meetings with really good context given by the chair about this is not a policymaking body. And by the same token, I, I don't believe this, I don't believe the role of planning commission is an advocacy body. I believe it's an execution body. And I, and I know that we talk. Rightfully so about moral imperatives. And at the same time, there is public policy at work here and we have. We've got performance metrics as a city and I think. That. I think. That our number one objective, my number one objective as a planning commissioner is to meet the arena goals, full stop. Number two. I, you know, I may have feelings personally about moral objectives, but I don't believe, I think that the, that the. Execution in the setup of plans by this body or recommendations from this body need to center around getting those plans executed. And I think that is my first charter and I. And I believe that's a charter of this commission. And I think that right sizing what we're doing to make sure that that happens is our number one responsibility as planning commissioners. And everyone obviously can feel different about that, but that's, I want to bring us back to. The, the, the performance of the city and the inertia we have as a city in doing this. And we talked about earlier not performing on what we need to as a city. Well, from this perspective, we in fact are from an individual moral imperative perspective, everyone may have a different view on that. I have a, have a. Kind of a technical or a question through staff, through the chair again to staff. And this. Has to do with public benefits. And. As, as we go into this upzoning, for instance, in the downtown specific plan. Will we be looking at? The public benefit program that we have in place and will that get as part of this overall development review looked at as well? And if so. Or is it an idea of how that would look? I know we've had, we've been talking about updates to, to other, for instance, Connect Menlo's. Community amenities plan, the public benefit plan, I think. For. Downtown specific plan, in my opinion, I don't think works well. I think we spend money on, we do spend money on blue bottle coffee bars outside of train stations and on, you know. Noise consultants. In different areas. And I don't know from my perspective if that's the best use of our money. So will that be transparent going forward? And is there any thought about how that might or might not be adjusted as we go through this potential round of rezoning changes? Question to staff.
So through the chair, if I, I can answer that. So the intent was not to. Open up the discussion on public benefit. In this downtown specific plan, we were primarily focused on the development regulations and standards to help incentivize the development and production of housing and affordable housing. But the intent was not to, to open up the review of the, the, of the public benefit.
Okay. I'm going to offer that I think that's a good idea to do that. I'm making, I, I, from my single commissioner perspective, it's a body of work. But I can't say there's much transparency, at least as far as I understand the public benefit profit process. And if we're going to be really adding some heft to some of these develop, this, the ability to build at significant densities. I, I think that public benefit schedule and process deserves a look to make sure that it is, you know, what we want to be doing here in twenty twenty or twenty twenty two, excuse me. So that would be my recommendation from my perspective to, to staff. Thank you.
Commissioner Tate.
Oh, yes. So I, I'm aware that several of us are activists in some sort of way that are on many of the commissions. And as we talk about moral compass. For me. And my thoughts are. We have a relatively new commission, council. And we are looking at something that does fall, will eventually fall back into the purview of the planning commission. So it is the time, I believe, to say, let's, let's push the needle. And, and I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry if other commissioners do not agree with that. But that it is, I, I do strongly believe that it is time for council to step out and, and push the needle. So thank you.
Other Commissioner comments, again, as a reminder, both to ourselves and to the, the public this evening, we will not be taking a vote and. And we do not have to reach agreement on anything this evening. This is us acting in our purview as a study session under our policy recommending. Part of our charter into the city council with this conversation this evening. So I think it's important that every commissioner feels like they've had the chance to be heard in this mix. And I recognize that some, including myself, have spoken quite a bit. And just want to step back and recognize if there are others that have comments that they would like to make that, to make space for that. And I say that as we, we may be reaching the portion of this where, where we're winding down. So I just wanted to make sure that every commissioner feels like they've said everything that they would like to this evening. So with that brief interlude, any, any other commissioners that would like the floor at the moment? Commissioner Schindler.
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. I think. There are. Many eloquent points that have been made in support of. Things that I would very much like to see continue, stay, stay in these proposals and thankfully be dialed up. Including. The focus on. Density. In the essential El Camino areas. The. Dialing down of parking as a restriction. Because I think, as was, has been eloquently said. That leads behavior change and leading behavior changes is sort of a recurring theme in, in my mind, and I'm going to come back to that in a second. I also believe that the, the use of parking spaces as an emphasis for where we could. Put the first. Put, put the greatest emphasis on developing, removing restrictions is important. So the city owned spaces, particularly the parking and coming up with creative solutions for that. With zoning and then with, I hope, programs and policies to incent development. Is, makes a ton of sense to me. And I also think it's how we lead, we help the city see the potential, we help our citizens see the potential of what a, a. More functional downtown could be. Like others have, have pointed out before, having a. More dense. And community brings in more voices. It's, it's the kind of city that I want to lead, live in. It also addresses the kind of question that I feel like I hear on a regular basis from people who don't think about planning and housing elements all the time. How do we make downtown, how do we make our city a more viable and vibrant place? And very, very infrequently do people think about? The. Question of housing density and the balance of commercial, I mean, everyday citizens, the balance of residential and commercial and office space. And so I think we have a real opportunity here to lead. By putting out some examples and, and coming up with a couple of really successful developments. And to demonstrate, to, to, to Chair DeCarty's example, coming up with one of those beautiful and functional examples to shine a spotlight on. In terms of sort of. I, I also, again, being newer to this process and trying to do my historical, looking back. Realize that the things we do in this element aren't just about this eight year period. They're about the next eight years and the next year, eight years after that. And so I think taking baby steps. Doesn't set us up for success in sixteen years. So I think the, the emphasis on going big, removing as many barriers as possible. Making our affordable housing overlay, for example, as, as aggressive as the states. Potentially removing the requirement for a developer to do both at the same time. I think there are creative solutions. And I think staff is, is the best, probably the best source of coming up with a lot of those, but coming up with other creative solutions to, to dial up that, that. Um, and I think staff is, is the best, probably the best source of coming up with a lot of those, but coming up with other creative solutions to, to dial up that, that density.
Other commissioner comments? Commissioner Doe.
Um, thank you, Chair DeCarty. Um, I don't think I have any too much to add. I'm going to say it's an overwhelming amount of details. So thank you to staff and the consultants for tackling that and creating a starting point for us in the community and the city council to comment on. Um, and I just want to um, echo some of my fellow commissioners' big picture statements, you know, building off of those details, the big picture statements about um, what we're trying to achieve. And I just want to extend that analogy about how, um, you know, we talk about mixed use downtown, creating vibrancy and how we just have an opportunity here and others have said this, a mixed um, dem- demographic. Um, that analogy is, I mean, that's the, the creating um, vibrancy and um, really just um, mixing up the demographics within our community and bringing in others that may not be living in our community yet because of the um, existing obstacles. Thank you.
Commissioner Harris.
Yeah, I just had a couple smaller things that I just wanted to, I, I know we've been mostly talking big picture, but I want to ensure that the staff has the direction that they need to provide um, for the city council and that the city council has the direction they need. So, um, the first of all, um, I wanted to thank staff. Um, I noticed that you, in the presentation, updated your comments about parking minimums and that they need to be eliminated um, versus in the staff report where it was a little bit um, questionable what, what our plan was. So I would agree that per the state, we need to just remove the parking minimums and not, not wait for a developer to kind of have to negotiate with us. Within the half mile uh, of downtown. So appreciate that and I want to make sure that that stays um, that stays in there, that we're just, we're just eliminating them. And then let's think about some parking maximums. Um, I am concerned about um, the FAR at 2.0 for downtown. Um, I'd like to see more density and we have a height restriction, we have an FAR restriction and we have a density restriction. So I, it's a bit of a Rubik's cube and we are trying to, um, I, I want to ensure that we are developing as much as we can in those areas. And in my talking with developers, um, I was hearing numbers in the 150 to 200 density range. And for the affordability, um, certainly at the 150 um, range and, but I know we also want to allow the for-profit developers as well. And I just, I don't want to, I don't, I, I want to ensure that we have higher densities. And also to make that work is going to require um, an all, uh, to change the FAR and, and certainly the height. So I want to think, I want to think through that um, and increase, in, increase those densities so that we can have that vibrant downtown and we can have this infill housing that's going to really help us with uh, the traffic and climate. Um, I think, I had a question for staff through the chair. Um, I know that we are collecting BMR housing funds. Um, my understanding is the Willow Village Housing Funds, BMR are going to be going for anti-displacement in the District One area or in the Bellhaven area. I'm wondering, um, what kind of BMR funding we have, what do we expect? And how might we use that in a way to help us um, for some of these sites where we do need to produce uh, affordable housing in the low and very low uh, income levels? So if I could to staff or, uh, I think that would be to staff. Thank you, Chair DeCarty. Um, so yes, we do have our below market rate housing fund and that is uh, contributed through our in lieu fees where commercial developments over 10,000 square feet contribute um, to the fund depending upon the type of use and the existing use. Um, and, and that is um, in, in our, our current uh, BMR fund probably uh, has, I, I'd have to double check, but we have some items that have been earmarked through our 2020 NOFA and probably a remaining amount um, that currently exists approximately $2 million. Uh, dollars. Uh, we are looking to do another NOFA, Notice of Funding Availability come this December, early January. Um, I believe the Housing Commission will be uh, reviewing, providing their feedback at their meeting next Wednesday. Um, and so that is an opportunity for organizations to provide um, their request to the city to help fund uh, for the production and or preservation, uh, rehabilitation of affordable units. So that is a great opportunity for um, for, to help use, utilize our BMR funds um, in the places that are, are needed. Um, in terms of additional funding, so uh, we did have recently a project at 1350 Adams that was approved. Um, they will be contributing BMR funds, which is typically paid at the time of building permit issuance. Um, that has not been received yet, but as commercial developments um, are approved and are built, um, then the funds do go forward into um, our, our BMRs. So they could be utilized for various programs through our NOFA or they could be um, used for like our housing assistance program or there are other programs um, through our housing element that can be considered, I think. Okay, I, I was, uh, I was hoping that there was going to be more funding and it might be something that we could do to purchase some land, maybe and, and help um, really incentivize some building, but um, I think it's would require more than $2 million. Um, given that land costs are 10 to 15 per acre. Um, okay. And I had one other question. And that is, I heard from, we got a letter, maybe it was from Menlo together, that there was some question about the ownership of the downtown parking lots. Um, and I, if I could uh, just ask about that and um, because given that I'm so anxious to get something built there, I want to, I want to ensure that we don't actually have a problem with the ownership or that if we do, we can get past it. So I think that would be, I guess, uh, through the chair to uh, staff again, or maybe city attorney.
Um, thank you, Vice Chair Harris. I'm uh, Mary Wagner again. I'm happy to try and uh, start that conversation and then maybe staff can assist. So we definitely have looked into the downtown parking lot issue um, and have analyzed the process that the city would need to go through. I think there's a little bit more work that needs to be done there. Um, but I don't think it's an insurmountable issue um, for that to be able to be resolved. It's, it's somewhat of a question of how they were created, how those parking lots were created and the funding that was utilized.
Okay. Uh, but you don't see that as a, an obstacle?
I, I think it's a process. I think it might take some time, but I don't think it's an, uh, an obstacle that can't be um, overcome.
Okay. Okay. Um, thank you for that. I think those are all my kind of smaller, smaller points and smaller questions. Thanks.
At this point, I'm going to ask staff, um, have you received the type and level of feedback that you were looking for from the commission this evening? I know, Mr. Smith, you outlined five approaches that you were looking at. There are also, at the end of the staff report, there are four specific areas for feedback. You asked, from my scan, I think commissioners have touched on those in various ways. But I, at this point, wanted to check with staff um, to make sure that you had received what you were looking for from us this evening.
Yeah, I think that in general, what, what we're hearing um, is to keep going forward and consider um, just bumping up uh, various regulations that we were looking at, especially as it relates to the specific plan area. And then um, in terms of parking, um, eliminating the minimums, considering maximums in the specific plan area. I, I would be curious to know, I don't think we've heard too much about the commercial zoning districts and there's the, the idea floated of using um, the C2B zoning standards as a model to sort of consolidate a number of zoning, smaller zoning districts that are similar in nature into, to one, to make it a little bit easier for everyone um, to develop and uh, review. And so I'm wondering if there's any feedback on that aspect.
Great, thank you. Anything else on the staff perspective on this for us to consider before we end?
Sure, we, we certainly appreciate all of the commissioners' uh, attendance here this evening and for the, the great conversation and providing feedback on, on our proposed zoning regulations. If, if I may, if, if there's an opportunity to, I, we've heard general comments about increasing our density, increasing our height, certainly the devil's in the details. And if there's any sort of number that, that are in commissioners' minds, I think that would be helpful as we try to frame, you know, our, it sounds like we want to go higher than what we've suggested, but it's sort of like, what, I've heard 150, I've heard 200, is that, is that just for affordable? Is that for, again, we're applying the zoning, there's housing opportunity sites in the specific plan, but all of the specific plan properties would be, have the same
Yeah.
zoning. And so just trying to get a gauge um, uh, of what that number might look like. And, and so we can go back and see what the appropriate heights might be. What are some of the other development regulations that would need to be adjusted to accommodate that?
Great, okay. So we have a, the specific question, if we have any comment on the use of the C2B zoning standards as a model to develop modified commercial district standards? And then for comments that have been talking about height and density, any specifics uh, that can go with that um, more than the general direction. I think those are the, that's the summary of what I've heard from staff asking us. This is not mandatory that everybody respond, but if commissioners feel that they want to address those or anything else before we end this evening, now would be the time, Commissioner Barnes.
Thank you for that. I uh, related to the use of the C2B zoning standards as a model, uh, I think it's, uh, it's a perfectly acceptable model. So I support that. So on that point, yes. Um, on the point of increased heights and increased densities, I, for, for me, uh, I absolutely believe there needs to, that, that question in isolation, um, yeah, is it, is not the direction we want to go. And I think that that question uh, paired with commensurate infrastructure, uh, specifically as it relates to um, things that I talked about, the recreation facilities, the placemaking, the open space, public and private, all of that. So I think for me, any relationship of that, any discussion about even above and beyond what we have here, uh, inclusive, I guess, I would say, even of what we have here, needs to be paired with that. What are we doing to accommodate um, those other aspects of, of, um, and I can say it again, but I said it before, the, the aspects of placemaking uh, and facilities and recreation. So, uh, I don't believe, I believe those two in pair have to be answered. And what I would want to see is a best practice for um, what are ratios for as density and height go up, well, height, it doesn't matter, well, height from a site planning perspective and density from an infrastructure perspective in terms of what your, the facilities are around it. I would want to see those two paired, uh, to be able to answer that question. And I think in isolation, it's not, it's a, not good question. Not, not good, but unanswerable question because the impact won't be known. Thank you.
Commissioner or Vice Chair Harris.
Yeah, on the commercial, um, I, can you, is there, do you have a, a map that you could put up of where the commercial um, zoned areas are?
Yes, uh, give me just a moment and I can, I think I have that, I can pull up. Okay, hopefully you can see this. Um, these are all of the C2, C2A, C1A, uh, C2S, C2B parcels in the city. And so they, they're surrounded by these green circles. Generally smaller sites.
Okay, how, how did you arrive at the 30 density per unit number?
30 dwelling units per acre, we were using the uh, the default density from HCD um, essentially, well, actually I should say the C2B zoning district. So you can see here, um, I'm not sure if you can see my cursor. There are, you can?
Yes, we can.
Okay, there are some C2B zoned parcels here. C2B zoning actually allows right now 30 dwelling units per acre for those parcels. And so um, given that others are similar in size from these different zoning districts, we thought maybe it would be an appropriate model to replicate.
Okay, and of those, um, how many have developed with um, residential housing? Sorry, with residential units?
So at this time, and I may need Deanna to assist with that, I, I don't believe we have residential development on these parcels. Is that correct?
Excuse me, that, that's correct. So as part of Connect Menlo, we did an adjustment to the C2B zoning district to allow for the mixed use up to 30 and the residential for up to 30 dwelling units to the acre. I don't believe any of the C2B parcels have been redeveloped at this time.
Okay, so, and what, when you spoke with developers about this, what did they have to say about that? Good, I'm just concerned if we, if we're at 30, but we haven't actually gotten any proposals or any residential, then maybe that isn't the right number. So I'm just wondering what else you've heard from other sources.
So we have done outreach to the various property owners, um, alerting them of the housing element and sort of uh, the potential for rezoning of, of various sites. We have not heard back from owners of these parcels. And so I don't think we have sort of a, a particular number in mind in terms of uh, if we were to go above 30 dwelling units per acre, what would be the, the right spot for that?
Okay, so I guess my recommendation would be uh, to go back and see if you can get some more information either from those owners or from, um, from other developers to just ensure that we've got the right number. It's, it sounds low to me, um, but I want to make sure that um, that, that we can get that residential that we want, um, that we need. So that would be my feedback on the commercial. Um, and if anybody else has more feedback on commercial, I um, yeah, if anybody else has feedback on commercial, please um, join in.
I have Commissioner Barnes with your hand up, is that correct? Or am I going to Commissioner Riggs?
I am sorry, that was my, uh, forgot to do that. Thank you.
No problem. Commissioner Riggs.
Thank you. I just briefly wanted to underscore what Commissioner Barnes has said so well. Both uh, half an hour, 40 minutes ago, and again, just a few minutes ago, that um, the increase in density really needs the support of the open space requirements and certainly recreational requirements. Uh, I mean, not, not to mention transportation and water, but uh, uh, these are, um, the open space requirements are critical to any good planning effort and they are present. Uh, and, and very thoroughly delineated in Connect Menlo. We look over at Connect Menlo and say, wow, look at all this growth. Why is all that growth over there? The reason is we had 150 acres to work with. So, um, I'll repeat my previous comments that building on the transportation corridor makes all the sense in the Building on the transportation corridor makes all the sense in the world. And I've heard that from other speakers and other commissioners. But we do need. To keep in mind. The necessary exterior spaces shared and and recreational. That go with any healthy community. And to provide density in order to make some numbers work, but not make our community work would be a really significant mistake. And I certainly wouldn't want. Our commission's name attached to support anything that was so. So narrow in in view. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and go. I. Appreciate this commission and working together. And I learned a lot. From fellow commissioners and I appreciate the comments made by Commissioner Barnes and Commissioner Riggs. Often find myself agreeing on the assessment of the situation and reaching the opposite conclusion about what to do. And I am wholeheartedly in favor of the density increase, the height increase, and continuing to go farther on this plan. I absolutely believe that the other elements should be in place. And I have faith that our city council that has a responsibility for looking this in total will make that happen. So in terms of numbers, and this gets the feedback on the C2B zoning, and I agree with with Vice Chair Harris. So. If the principle is to allow streamlining, I'm all for streamlining where we can. That if it achieves our goals with allowing staff to be able to get things done more efficiently and to get through the development processes, that's better for everybody. If the goal is to actually encourage more housing and more affordable housing. Then I don't have the expertise to know what that number should be set at. And in just. Believing that that's one of the things that M Group and staff have been doing is looking at models, consulting with developers. It's what some of the comments were tonight, which is, are these levels set at? The right point where developers would actually utilize them. And I would just simply encourage that if that. Look has been done and that that's the right number, then that's great. But the principle I would completely agree with. This also gives me the question about the height and the density question in here as well. Do I know exactly what height I would say in response to your question? No, I do think that needs to be thoughtful in here, but I do believe we can do a lot more than what's recommended. You could certainly go four, five or six on stories. But I also think that the slide that Mr. Smith just put up is also very useful because just if you squint at it, we've got the bayfront area. That has a whole lot of yellow rectangles that look a lot like the yellow rectangles that are around the building that I'm sitting in right now. And we made a decision through Connect Menlo to allow development of a certain kind with certain heights. In one area with those yellow rectangles, and yet we are not necessarily open to doing that in the other area with those little yellow rectangles. And I think as a principle that we should at least explore what it would look like, as a couple commentators made tonight. To actually equitably apply that thinking, especially because as was noted, we do have better transportation infrastructure. That is down here. And again, I'm sitting in city council chambers in that mix. So I, I. Appreciate the direction on getting specific numbers. On the density and on the height. About what the incentives are for development that allow the FIR to shift, F, the FAR to shift, all of those things. I appreciate that. I don't have the depth of diving into this that created those recommendations through to us. But that would be at least a little bit of some of the principles I would apply in thinking through what I meant by my feedback on where you would look at maximums in those places. Commissioner Doe.
I'll second, thank you, Cheryl. Second, your comments on us, myself, not necessarily having the expertise and also second Commissioner Riggs and Barnes on the seat. Looked at holistically with open space and things like that. But I did also want to echo Vice Chair Harris's. Some of the numbers that. Community letters, developer letters, 150, 150 to 200. And and I'm sorry if you. If the staff, if staff already answered this question, but just, just curious if in your conversations and looking at. Precedents and speaking with developers, if you also came across those numbers that came through to us through community letters. Thank you.
We did have conversations with both affordable housing developers and. Market rate developers. And we did, we did certainly hear that increased density was one thing that that they were looking for. Don't recall a specific number being thrown out like 150 to 200, but it sounds like. Multiple commissioners have heard that. And so we'll, we can take that into consideration. And share that with city council.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tate.
And so I'm not sure if this is the appropriate place or not, but. With programs and funding. And not sure if that $2 million can be. Utilized for something like this, but I do think that we should, as a city, need to look at implementing some sort of a move-in ready program. Because I feel that there are a lot of people who, even though we're building below market housing. May not be in a position to, or don't think they are, to even secure a unit. And if there's someone else who, you know, has a higher credit rating or. Has the funds already put together, they're able to move in, you know, just. Their application will float to the top. So I'm not sure if there's something, and we talked about this quite a bit when I was on the Housing Commission. And there was always some sort of a limitation, like we, we couldn't go any further. So. Is there, through the chair and the staff, is there some sort of way to build in something like that at this point where the city does fund a program like that? Exactly what it would look like, I don't know, but something to help people get on track to make sure that that. When the opportunity arises, they are ready to move in.
Thank you, Commissioner Tate. So we can certainly look into and see if that falls within the purview of the BMR housing funds or if it falls within a program that we already have proposed. I know we're looking at. Certainly opportunities for greater education and first time buyer, home buyer programs. And so we could potentially see if that fits within that umbrella. And are you looking, it's like rental and is there interest in rental and homeownership for a move-in ready program, if I understand correctly?
Yes, that would be great if it could be something for both, because we know that credit is also, is often a problem. And there's a lot of people who are unbanked. And and that's an issue too, right? So. I did talk with independently through Bell Haven Community Development Fund with a potential partnership years ago with Samatail Credit Union. So I know that that there are kind of ways to try to. Make something like this work, just really what the snapshot looks like on trying to help people to get themselves together. But yes, homeownership as well as rentals, that would be fabulous to find some, someplace to put this. Thank you.
Commissioner Barnes.
Thank you. I'm remiss in adding. And recommendation to. To counsel that. Whatever we can do within these. The new zoning. Site selection. Submitting the housing element that fosters. For sale housing, homeownership. Not just rental. I want, I don't know the levers associated with that. But I think it's critically important that we continue to slog ahead. To create opportunities for homeownership and. Doing that through the mechanisms we have at our disposal, which is, you know, land use and land use policy and land use. Changes which allow for that. I think it's really, really important for us to have in this housing element. Thank you.
So other commissioners' comments or any remaining questions? Before we end this evening? All right, then I am going to. Have us close item F2 on our November 14th Planning Commission agenda continued to this evening. With closing that item, there are no other items remaining on our agenda this evening. And before I close this meeting, I'm going to check with staff just to make sure that I am moving through this in the right. Order of process. I have a nod, which I will take as an affirmative. I want to thank the members of the community who are here for both of these meetings for their comments. And for your care of our community. That's what drives us. Thank you for being here this evening. To the staff for the extra time, this is the second. Continuation we've had is a planning commission meeting in the last two months, which means extra staff time and making this happen. Thank you for that. And to my fellow commissioners, we are all volunteers. That you all have put in extra time. Thank you for that. I think it's been great that all seven of us have been in both of these continued meetings. And with that, we will see you very soon at our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is on Monday, December 5th. And I will close the meeting for this evening. Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you.